Okay. Ready to go, Karen.
Okay. Would you like me to make the introduction or?
That'd be you, Gail.
Okay, um. First of all, welcome to the December 21st, 2020, meeting of the City of Laconia zoning board of adjustment. I do have a brief statement that I have to read here before we can convene the meeting. Due to the COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 and executive order 2020 death 04, this meeting is to be conducted electronically. The public has access to listen to and participate in this meeting by using the following link. Zoom meeting and link, Zoom meeting and entering the password. You must be using the Zoom, Zoom app on an enabled device to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times. And do you need me to read the link?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Zoom link is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US02WEB dot Z O O M dot U S forward slash J forward slash eight six one three two five one one four one three. Do you need the power drive number?
Yes.
The power drive is S, capital S, small j, capital A, small w, capital Q, small z, capital F, small u, capital M, capital E, small t, small a, capital zero, or capital O, capital W, capital V, small p, capital V, one, capital V, three, small e, capital U, small x, capital X, small d, two, small g, small r, capital U, capital T, zero nine. The webinar ID is eight six one three two five one one four one three. The passcode is eight one six one seven oh. If you want to listen only, you will not be able to participate. If you want to listen on, by phone, you can call one three one two six two six six seven nine nine or one six four six five eight 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 six five six or one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Again, using this option only allows you to listen to the meeting with no opportunity to participate. If you have problems, please call six zero three five two four three eight seven seven, extension two four nine, or email zoning@laconiannewhampshire.gov. To view this meeting, YouTube under the City of Laconia, that's HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot youtube dot com forward slash Laconia NH. Due to technical difficulties, we are temporarily suspending live transmission of city meetings on channel 26, which is Laconia's public access television channel. This is because there are incompatibilities between the Zoom virtual platform, virtual meeting platform and the Atlantic broadband platform. Live transmissions of city meetings on channel 26 will resume as soon as COVID-19 emergency restrictions are lifted and completely in-person meetings resume. With that being said, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I will ask if any, if Karen or Dean would recall the roll.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Steve Bogert is absent with notification. Michael Foot. Gail Ober.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Here.
And Michael Delavecchio has emailed and said he will be late. So I will put him as late with notification. Acting staff, recording secretary is Karen Centro, myself. Staff in attendance is Dean Trevan, Director of Community Planning and Community Development.
Okay. Um, before I'll say this, Steve Bogert is our normal chair. He is unable to be at the meeting tonight. I guess by default, I am chairing the meeting. I have read the announcements. If somebody who is in the room, Mike Foot or Roland, would you prefer to chair the meeting because you're physically there? I cannot see any of the applicants out in.
No, Gail, I think you're well on the way.
All right.
I agree.
Okay. A first order of business is to accept the minutes of the previous meeting. And do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Have we all read them? Are there any changes, anything anyone wants to add, subtract?
I propose we accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, because we are meeting electronically or partially electronically, I'll call the roll. Mike Foot.
Accept.
Roland Mayhew.
Accept.
Gail Ober, accept. Okay. Now, this is, this next part of the meeting is something that I have to explain to every single applicant that is in the room. Tonight, we are not, the Laconia Board of Adjustment is a five-member board. Tonight, we are unable to give you five members. At best, we're going to start this meeting with three. And at some point in time, a fourth member is going to be joining us. He is at work and he does work at a hospital, so he is, he, but he will be here, he has said. For those people who are applicants, you have a right under state law to a full board, that is a five-member board. If you choose to go forward with the three members who are sitting here now and/or with four members when Mike Delvecchio arrives, you still need to get three votes in the affirmative to pass. For you to get either what, for you to get either a variance or a special exception or whatever it is that you're asking for us tonight. I don't believe we have any other kinds of application. It's important that I tell you this because once we go forward, we are going forward. There's no redos. What this means in actuality is right now, we have three members of this board. For someone to go forward with our application, all three of us have to vote in the affirmative. When, when our fourth member joins us, three of the four members will have to vote in the affirmative. If only two people vote yes, the motion will fail. If there's anyone out there in the audience and/or participating via Zoom who does not want to continue with a partial board, now is the time to say something and you will be put on the agenda first in order of as you appear on the agenda tonight. And I'm going to give anybody and who is out there, and I can't see who's out there. I can look at the attendees and I have some names and I have some people that I don't recognize. Is there anyone who chooses that is on the agenda tonight who would like to wait a month and wait until we can get a full board? I will say that we do have an alternate in the pipeline. So that hopefully next month, we should have one alternate. So we should barring any catastrophic crisis, be able to field a full board. So are there any applicants that choose not to? I see applicant attorney Brouillard. Phil?
Just take a pause here.
Take, take a pause here, Gail. I want to just make sure that everybody in the audience has heard and understood first.
Thank you.
I would like to wait and see if Mike shows up. I'm willing to go forward with four members, but not three.
Okay, okay.
And I'll just get, I'll just get getting pushed back.
Um. You're actually not first on the agenda anyway, Attorney Brouillard, but.
Yes, I know, I just.
I understand, I understand, okay? Are there any other applicants either online? For the audience who would like to go next month and wait until we can get a five-member board?
The one applicant that is here wants to proceed. I will ask the people who are online to, if you want to make a statement one way or the other, to hit the raise your hand button. That's about on the screen and I do have one hand raised right now.
Mr. Barney.
Mr. Barney. Hang on just a second and I will try to get you up here.
Okay, I have Jen Mitchell, who has said in a group chat that she would like to proceed, okay?
Okay. We have Mr. Barney.
We have Mr. Barney. You are on mute, Mr. Barney, if you could unmute.
And they have to ask you to unmute first.
Okay, finally unmuted. This is Dave Barney.
Okay.
And we would like to postpone until we have a full board.
Okay, we understand, thank you very much. Dean will make note and as we're doing the agenda for January, you will be first in terms of the order that you were scheduled on tonight. Okay, so if there are any other applicants that are here that happen to be in front of you, they would go first, but you would, okay.
Yes, that's, that's 58 Edgewater.
All right.
Excuse me.
Very good.
I can't hear, I can't hear Mr. Barney.
Okay.
Okay. Well.
He's going off.
He's going off anyway.
All right, we will delay you, Mr. Barney.
Delay you, Mr. Barney.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have two more hands raised. You can hang up if you want, or you can hang around for the fun and excitement. I have Lynn, hang on a second here.
You're very echoey, Dean.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go, perfect. Okay, there is someone out there named Libby who has her hand up, I see. Yeah? Oh, okay.
We have an applicant, Lynn, that's 401 Lakeside.
Can you hear me? I'm willing to go forward with.
Okay, Lynn Hapke, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, all right, just hang right there and we'll get you in a minute.
In a minute.
And then I have Libby with her hand raised. I believe you said that she wanted to continue. Did you chat with you, said you had a chat? Well, that would, hang on a second.
Okay, okay, Libby's coming up.
All right, you should be on.
Okay. I am not a participant. I just want to be able to, I mean, I'm a participant, I'm not, I'm not one of the applicants. And if the, if the applicants are going forward, the parties, I would like to be able to participate.
Okay, just hang on. Which application are you looking for to, to comment on?
Cheryl Knight.
Okay.
It's with this Nicole Stackpole, 250 Guilford Avenue.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We will.
If you want to have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Your side.
So I think we're ready to go.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, in order to, if, normally we would take this in order. We do have one application that's scheduled for the end of the meeting and I'd like to entertain, I'd like to discuss with my other two panelists. That is from the City of Laconia, where they don't need our approval, they're here. I'm trying to give people more time to get Mike Delvecchio there, to get at least four people here for you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, with Mike and Roland, I would entertain a motion to go forward with the City of Laconia's application at 45 Beacon Street East. This is pro forma, they do not need our approval to do this. They have chosen to bring this forward to us as a matter of public transparency and disclosure. It does concern the properties at 50 Church Street and 30 Church Street. Could I have a motion to that? Does anyone want to motion that?
A motion to move forward.
Second.
Okay. I'll call the roll, Roland Mayhew. We have a motion on the table to move forward with the City of Laconia's. All right, Roland, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Foot?
Yes.
And Gail Ober votes yes, okay. The City of Laconia has asked to subdivide lots to separate the parking area from two identifiable lots on Church Street. For those of you out there, the lot addresses are 30, 50 Church Street and 30 Church Street. They are what is commonly called at the St., the old St. Joseph's Church. What the city is going to do, and they want to be public about this, is that they want to divide, subdivide these properties and move the parking to one property. I believe that if Dean wants to speak on behalf of this, is there somebody from the city here that could talk about this? Is Dean, that, you're going to be your role tonight or?
That would be, yes. So I know the city bought the campus of the St. Joseph's Church. With the exception of the church itself. They have gone through a subdivision process about a year or so ago where they created three separate lots. The church is not a whole lot, basically encompassing the church and the immediate land. And then mansion and the school, the other two lots. And the parking area in the rear was divided off the mansion and the school lot. So the parking area is shared. All of the cross easements for things like parking and using the driveways is all in place.
That was done when the subdivision was done.
So what the city needs to do is to subdivide off just the parking area into a separate lot. And the reason that we need this to be in a separate lot, as you know, we are in the process of trying to sell the remaining properties, the mansion and the school property. However, when the city bought these two properties.
We did so with a bond. And the reason given on the bond, in addition to the two buildings, was to obtain general parking for the city. So consequently, when all is said and done, in order for that bond to be legal and legitimate, the city needs to maintain the land that contains the parking, because that's what we primarily took the bond out for, was for parking. So with the understanding that we were going to sell off the rest of the property. So that's why we need to subdivide into a fourth lot that contains all of the parking area. But that would maintain the cross easements that are already in place for the various future property orders to be able to use those driveways to come from Church Street into the parking lot and pull for out. And for the city to use those driveways and for the people in those buildings to be able to use the parking area. So all those easements are in place, they would continue to be in place. The reason that we are here is because this fourth lot that will be created does not have a street front. As you know, there is zoning ordinance. And any new lot is required to be on some public right-of-way. So that would be a very situation, but as you know, the city is exempt from its own ordinances. But as a courtesy, we are here to make the aware and also from a transparency standpoint, to make the public aware of what we're doing, why we're doing it. And we're also looking for any feedback or suggestions or anything along that line that the board may have. After this board, we will be going to the planning board for the actual subdivision of the lots. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thanks, Dean. I do want to add that for those few people who are participating tonight, I will open this up to public comment. However, this is not the forum to debate the wisdom or non-wisdom of this purchase. This is merely a formality to separate the parking lot from the buildings to allow the city to go forward with its plan. So I will open this for public discussion. If anyone has anything to say about separating the parking from the rest of these properties, now is your opportunity. Okay, I don't see anyone that wants to participate, Dean. A point of order, do you need a vote on this?
About discussion, I have some questions.
Okay, sorry.
Right? So as I'm looking at this, this fourth lot is going to be behind the church and actually going across two pieces of property to create this fourth lot?
That is correct, Mike. I don't know how, if you've been out back there recently, but there's eighty something parking spaces here. Essentially, the entire parking lot will be, will become this fourth lot. And you're right, it goes across the back of the mansion property, it goes across the back of the church property and a little bit towards the back of the school property.
And one more question, without the road furniture, what is the access for this parking?
There are three driveways.
There's one in between the school and the church, one between the church and the mansion, and one between the mansion and the library lot. Those three driveways are all remain. They do have some in and out, you know, one-way direction. I forget which is which right off the top. And like I mentioned, the easements are already in place for all the needed to use those driveways.
Any, any, anyone, Roland, you all set, Mike, or?
All good.
Okay, Roland, do you have any questions you want to ask about this parking configuration?
No, I'm all set, I'm very familiar with that area.
Okay. Okay.
I've used that lot, that parking lot many times.
Yeah. So do I. Okay, well, with nothing being said, unfortunately, I didn't see Mike into the, Mike Delvecchio into the room. Do you need a vote on this, Dean?
I think it's just a statement for the board that you have reviewed and you don't have.
Okay, um. Is that okay with Roland?
Yes.
Mike?
So moved.
Oh, okay. We don't have a formal motion on the table, but I think there is, to allow this to go to the planning department where they will further flesh out what they're going to do with the future of this property. Okay. Thanks a lot, Dean, and thank you applicants for indulging us. I was hoping to buy a little time until we got a fourth member here, because the more people we have, the better off it is for you. Unfortunately, that did not happen, so I'm going to give you out there one more time. If anyone else wants to wait for a full five-member board, now is the time to do it. I cannot delay anymore, any longer. Anyone, and Attorney Brouillard, you had said that you were willing to go to the back of the line. If that's what it takes, you'll do four people, but you won't do three.
I don't want to do three, but I'll, I'll wait, see if Mike shows up.
Okay, all right. All right, well, then I will move forward with the first application on the list. And that is application Z zero two zero two zero zero one oh five is amended variance for application for 401 Lakeside Avenue. And this is for Lynn and Richard Hapke. And if the applicants are either online or in the room, I invite you to come up and tell us what it is you want to do.
Which one is this?
Online.
Yeah, Lynn is, Lynn is on screen.
Online, okay.
So we have two projects that we'd like to do. One is to put on possible about a 12 by 12 deck. Added to the addition, the deck that's currently there on the back of our house, it's on the, facing the railroad. I don't know how detailed you want me to get, I mean, do you exactly what it says on the application or?
This. Yeah, we can see what, you know, we were looking at what, what your schematics say here. Um, all right, go ahead.
This would be, and it would be an extension to the left, which would, is our existing property. It would be towards the garage. Our goal is to put a hot tub on it.
Okay.
And then second, we would like to make like a bonus room in the upstairs of our garage. And that, we would like to, we would, and what we're looking for is a variance for the stairwell. We'd like to put an outside stairwell along the edge of our garage that faces the, the house.
And this is going into the rear setback towards the railroad property, right?
It is. The, at the top of the stairs, we would have a deck at the top and that would be cantilevered, so there would not be, and we would not need existing posts or, we don't need to go into the, I don't know.
I know what you're saying, yeah.
Okay.
Using the space above the ground, but you're not using the ground.
Exactly, exactly. So we're not really getting, gaining anything other than, we're going to go, we'd like to go, I think we're going to need to raise the, the roof on that building a little bit.
You think or you know?
We were told by Karen we would. We haven't done the plans yet, we haven't gotten, we're, we're in a little pickle because our builder hasn't come over to apply for the permit yet because we don't have the variance.
Yeah, we know. So. Okay, Mike, you had a question for, for Lynn?
No, it's just, wanted to know what the precision of it was. Are we raising it, are we not? Is there more room? What are the plans?
We're going to raise the roof. And the goal would be just to have an extra bonus space for my office, just to have a little extra room for the house.
Now, I'm really curious, because I don't know if this is in our definitions. What is a bonus space? And where does that come from? And if it's in there, I'm sorry, I didn't study.
I don't believe we have an official definition.
Um, I believe you, you want to increase your living area and it's going to be on the second floor only, not on the first floor, is that correct?
Exactly, we're going to continue to use the garage as a garage and then the upstairs of the garage, we'd like to have a big, a large room up there that we can use.
Okay, and you need to come into the front setback in order to do this?
Yes. But it wouldn't be further, obviously, I mean, this is just a stairwell to go up the side of the garage. It wouldn't be any, it, it's all going to be on our existing property, it's not going to go any, any further.
Right.
Than the existing, you know, garage, it's there. I don't, I don't think you could.
Okay, about how far do you think into the front setback is the stairwell going to jut out? I'm looking at, um, it's hard for me to tell by the, by the thing, but the stairway actually has to come out onto the ground. About how far into the front setback is that?
Maybe four to six feet.
All right.
Is it four or six feet?
I don't know for sure, because I don't know how, see, I'm, I'm not a builder, I don't know how to build stairs. But I know that it would not come further than the front of the garage. There's a door on the side of the garage, that's the entrance, the side entrance into the garage. And the steps would start after the door. So that's why I'm saying that setback is barely.
But just engineering, you know, it's only math.
I'm going to, I want to say it's only two feet into the setback area.
Okay, now you, you understand that we're probably going to prove this for a specific number of feet to go into the setback area. We're not going to say two or about.
Okay, let's say six, let's say six then.
And that gives us, and how, how deep is that setback there, Karen?
Okay, let, let's get a little clarification so that everybody's on the same. Okay, let, let's get a little clarification, so that everybody's on the same page.
Six and twelve, or six is good, twelve is good, what's different, I'd say six.
And, and it, it is a bit confusing, simply because the lot is long and narrow. Now, if you look at the uh, proposed conditions, you've got that red long narrow box, that's their building envelope. Very, very slim, because of the, it's an old property. The car and garage sits at approximately nine feet off the front property. So the front of the garage is already in the setback. And I am just that is commercial resort.
Okay.
You would need fifteen feet as, for the front setback. The garage sits currently at nine.
And the garage is at nine? And
Correct.
And she wants to go out even further into the setback?
No, she wouldn't be extending past the front of the garage. She would be extending into the setback, the front a little bit to the rear, and then she would be increasing the bulk of the non-conformity of that garage by going up and adding the room on the second floor.
Okay.
The other portion of the application is, is the deck, which there is an existing landing, they're proposing a twelve-by-twelve deck that extends no further back on the ground, as, as far as the existing uh, landing that's already there.
Exactly. Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot. There's also a proposal for a small second-floor deck to the front of the garage, which extends out into the front setback.
Into the front setback or the rear setback? I've seen railroad tracks.
There's actually two.
Both.
There's a twenty-four by approximately eight-foot rear deck, and then a small five-by-ten front deck.
And that's what comes coming into the front setback? Everything else is going to the rear?
Yes.
With the exception, potentially of those stairs.
Of the, with the potential of the stairs.
Right, when they hit ground.
Okay. Um, anyone else, Roland, Mike, any, you got any other questions?
Not yet.
I do, where on Lakeside Ave is this? I guess I'm ignorant of Lakeside Ave.
We live next door to the Wears Beach Motel. So the, the actual motel that has the, like, say, twelve rooms is next door to us, then there's a lot, then there's our house.
Is this on the east side of Lakeside? Or the west? If it heads north and south, right?
North, south, we're, yeah, we're on the east side.
There you go. Thank you.
Railroad tracks are directly behind us. And then two doors down is the building that, the Aquamarina, um, their residence.
Okay. Um.
So any extensions to the rear actually go to the railroad track?
Exactly, and they're up, they're up on the second level.
Yeah.
And they'll be cantilevered out.
Uh, Mike, it stays within the property, it doesn't encroach on adjacent land.
I'm good.
Okay, um, I, I have no further questions of the applicant Roland, got any more questions for Lynn?
No, I don't.
Okay, um, at this point in time, I'm going to give anyone, uh, who is attending this meeting, an opportunity to, um, um, say, speak for the applicant, or the applicant have anything else to say, that you want to address any of the five criteria that you need for us to grant you this variance? Um, these are the five questions you answered on your application, do you have anything else that you want to say?
Nope, I think this is fine, I mean,
Okay.
It's all on our existing property, it doesn't affect anybody's view.
We don't care.
We've talked to our neighbors, they all agree that it's a good idea, that they don't have any issues, they're not there.
Okay. Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, then, in that case, I'm gonna ask you to, to mute, and then at this point in time, I'm gonna ask, is anyone in the audience have anything they want to say for or against this application? Uh, I don't see any hands raised, I don't see, is there anyone in the audience there? No?
No.
Okay, and I'll bring it back to the board, um, do you have any, anyone on the board, what do you have to say about this? Mike, um, Roland?
I have a little difficulty just looking at it right here, probably should have done more of my homework ahead of time, but given that.
You're, I hear you.
So what I'm seeing here is, I, I wish I had better contact with the information that we have, that's why. I don't know. Just as long as someone who creates this motion can actively state what it is that's actually desired, I would see it going forward.
Is, is there anything that, that, anyone, Roland or Mike, is there anything that you find particularly objectionable about this, or that you see as a, as a, as an encroachment? Or that is contrary to the public interest, or any of the five criteria that we have to consider? Do you see anything there that is, is, is gonna ruin someone's life down the road, I guess?
No, I, I do not, in, in that. But once again, I'd like someone to read this motion, who really has a good hold on it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wrestling with, is how we're actually gonna word this.
No, there I am.
Um, is this something you'd like to give it, to give it a shot, Mike?
Not at all.
Roland? Come on, help me out here, guys. Um, all right.
I don't have, you know, on this application, once again, I, I'm flailing here because of lack of information.
I, I, I kind of feel the same way, I, 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 I don't, I think I know what they want to do, but I'm not exactly sure how I can put this in order.
I don't want to read something for one thing, and I see additions that are here, I see a deck, I see a rear deck, I see a front deck, which goes into the setback.
Mm-hmm.
But no more than what I can see for the building next to it.
Yeah, the building next to it, they can see, um, this is about
And I don't get this thing in the middle, there's twelve by twelve, maybe I don't have a good concept of what this building looks like.
It's two separate buildings, it's the house and then a detached garage. So the twelve-by-twelve deck is off the house. The addition, the second floor, the twenty-four by eight, and the two-by-five second-floor decks, and the stairs are on the detached garage.
Okay, so, we go to the CAI technology map, the second one, that only shows the outline, these are the two buildings we're talking about, Karen, the 401 seems to be in the middle of one, and that is the house.
That's the main house.
That's the main house, and on this main house, on the back of it, yes? On the back
They want a two-foot by twelve deck.
They want a twelve-foot by twelve-foot deck with
It extends two feet into the
Setback. Or just
No, no, the bulk of the deck extends into the setback, there's a two-foot cantilever. So a total would be twelve by fourteen.
I see.
Well, I don't see fourteen then.
I see it, the twelve feet for the deck, and then she's gonna cantilever a porch off it, which, it's a total extension towards the railroad track, Mike, of fourteen total feet.
All right.
You see that?
And it still keeps it outside of the railroad right-of-way.
Yes. Um, yeah, I mean, can I ask the, the planning department a question? Uh, Dean, are them, and we, and this, does that, does this have to be submitted to the right-of, to the state for the right-of-way through the railroad tracks? Is there anything about this that she has to go through? And where, are we missing something here that has to do with?
No, we've notified them, they were one of the, I got notified.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, I, I think I would, the only thing I would add is that the deck being added to the main house does not go any closer to the rear property line than the current house does, it's other than the two-foot cantilever.
Okay.
The garage is, is a little bit different situation there. Um, I mean, that little red line that's on the first sheet is, is the building envelope. It doesn't give you a lot of opportunity to do anything. Um, as it's a notice, this is, uh, everything is non-conforming for the most part, and the whole neighborhood is non-conforming for the most part.
Is this the old green arrow? Or whatever it was there?
Yeah.
I mean, every building down there is non-conforming. It's just the way it is.
Let's move along on this lovely toast this evening.
Um.
How many parts are there to this motion? Just a single?
How many what?
I mean, seeing the multiple to the, uh, Is the approval to approve three different things here?
It does look like it, it looks like she's asking for three separate things here. She's asking for um, a two-foot extension to the rear for a, a cantilever for a porch, okay? Off of the main house. On the garage, it's to be extended off of the back of the garage to go into the setback, and then there's a, a third area, which is gonna come into the front setback, which is not on the ground floor, but is like a second floor. I can't think of a word that I, I would say it.
All right, so this, uh, bonus room is gonna be above the garage, not attached to the house?
Right, a bonus room is attached to the garage, which is a standalone garage, and
And this isn't for extra living, there's no certificate of occupancy or Airbnb in this unit?
I think she says something about an occupancy, but I, I don't believe it's occupancy, I believe this this is, this is strictly garage space.
No.
And, uh, it looks like there's a garage underneath this.
Is the second floor already on, in the garage ceiling, or is that gonna be built later?
I, I think she's gotta go up on, she's raising the whole roof of the garage in order to do this.
If you look at your agendas, the description outlines everything that's being asked for.
I think you could do this with one but it would have the three components of building, deck, and then the decks of the garage, deck, stairway of the garage, and then increasing the bulk of the garage, those are the three key components.
Right.
And if you're good with all three, you have one motion.
Are you ready?
Um, did, okay, Mike or Roland, do you want to discuss any of these entities? The one that I really have a question on is, is the front part, which appears to be what I, the only way I can describe this is a giant bay window that will be occupied. It's gonna be cantilevered up off of the garage. I mean, off
And it's on the second floor.
And it's on the second floor, which yeah, and there, that's the, the, the third part.
So would that second floor front deck be at the same level as where this rear deck is? With access through the bonus rooms, front rear?
So it looks like there's, there's a second floor on, gonna be on the garage? Is this what you understand?
Question for me, can I, should I answer?
Um, yeah, okay.
Sure, so what I guess I'm looking for here is an understanding that the second floor will also have access to the second door deck and the rear deck also?
Yes, it's one big, it'll be one big room. Basically, that front small deck that we want that's facing the road. My husband wants to just be able to sit up there and watch the bikes go by. He just wants a very small deck overlooking the road.
Okay, and a perch, if you will.
Yeah, so basically, I was just gonna put a door there, and he wants that little, exactly. His little perch.
And, and then the rest of it is, is for what, is for a deck and, and increased, and there, and you don't, this is not living space, other than you hang out up there?
This will, I mean, right now, I'd like to have my office up there, and then for holidays, I'd like to have my family up there.
But I, I guess according to Roland, to member, uh, Mayhew's question, this isn't gonna be, you're not gonna be here in three years with a request to have your in-laws move in up there and put in a
No, 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 no.
I got one more question, is there water available in this? Is there a quarter bathroom, is there some other?
We'd like to put a
areas that we're headed to that we haven't mentioned yet?
Yeah, and we would like to put a bathroom in there. There's electricity in there already, and we would like to put plumbing if we could.
Is there plumbing to the garage now?
No.
All right.
And it would just be like, just, yeah, like you said, a quarter bathroom, a toilet, and a sink.
Just a one-car, two-car garage, Karen?
Two.
Yes, it's twenty-five by two, it's a two.
Twelve feet, it's only one.
That's just the deck off the garage.
Double check.
The garage is twenty-four by twenty-four, it's two bays.
Okay.
What do you think, Jim?
I think we've got a real Frankenstein here, but, um, I, uh, I know what she wants to do. Truthfully, um, I guess once I put it all together, I understand it, I, I guess it's really adding to the non-conformity, but there's very little else that can be done with this lot, just because of the unusual shape of the lot, which I think goes to the hardship. Um, what do you think? Mike, Roland?
I don't know. I'm good.
I'm still wondering what undersized use, use means.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to accept Senator twenty twenty zero one oh five for variance, we're looking for variance from thirty-five, thirty-five feet, Article seven. And this, uh, covers for 401 Lakeside Ave. We're looking at adding to garage a twenty-four by eight-foot deck on the east side of it, towards the twenty-four by eight-foot deck on the east side of it towards the sorry, the railroad. And on the front side of it, we're looking at a ten-foot by five-foot deck.
And yeah, we'll call it an enclosed deck, Mike. Is that good?
Is it?
I don't really know what it is.
Is it enclosed or not enclosed?
The front or the back?
The front, or either? Are these open decks or are these closing it?
The reason we need to, no, it's they're open decks. They're not going to, not going to enclose them at all.
Oh, okay.
Have a railing around.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Also in this is a component of a stairwell which seems to be of an undefined width. Can I get definition on that?
Well,
No more than fourteen?
Sure.
Right, twenty-four, thirty-six is three? Just didn't know if you want to ride a wheelchair.
No, no.
And then the other piece here is on the main house and we're looking at a twelve by twelve deck to the east side of it with a two-foot cantilever. Have I stated everything correctly?
Yes, from my point, yes.
For clarification, Mr. Foot, it's two thirty-five, thirty-five A and B. It's front and rear.
All right, thank you. All right. Creating the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it, a lot of these older places can be used to be updated. We like decks because it gives us better access outside and use of our property. Says that the variance would be in the spirit of the property would be observed because it allows well additional types of living. And this undersized use, if we can build little homes and I'm not going by into undersized use, it's just an updating of an older property. Once again, it would do some gentle justice because it has access to utilize their property outside. Once again, I'm not buying into undersized. It would update the house, so would not probably diminish the values of the crowning properties. Any of these, these older properties could use good updating. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. It's in a tighter area that is resort commercial. And I think it would be fine for the community.
Okay. Do I hear?
I will second it for discussion.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Roland, you wanted to discuss it further?
Yes. I'm not criticizing the people who did this application. But I would like to say that the amount of information that we got was extremely sketchy. It's very, very difficult to make a decision. I didn't get a chance to get out and see this one this year because of the snowstorm we had the other day. It would have been much easier for me if I had seen it, known in the flesh, so to speak, but I wish that when you come before the board, if you just give us a little more information to work on and make our job that much better.
We can do that in the future, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, what's the future? Are we going to add an Airbnb?
No, next is to get a permit to do the work.
There you go. All the information, all the information helps all of the departments here in the city of Lookout.
Are you going to condition your, your motion with that? That, that, you know, obviously, this has got to go through the building permits and everything and and I, I'm understanding your motion that we're giving her four feet to extend the staircase. If in fact the risers and the building permit just can't be done within four feet, do we want her to come back and ask, what do we want to do in that case? Because none of this has been designed.
I think you're probably well within the realm of what you want to do. It's excessive.
No more than four feet into the front setback for the staircase, Mike?
The front setback, yeah. Well, in line with what they have, the four feet, the question is, is it two feet wide? Three feet wide, four feet wide, not so much the front extension? How wide is the actual staircase?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, that goes into the interior of the property. I don't know that that really matters. I mean, unless
It still extends width and depth into the setback. Still has area, two dimensions.
I'm guessing it's going to be, Karen, you're going to put a standard staircase for access, right?
Yeah, we could just stay the standard staircase.
I, I don't
One that meets building code.
Yeah, and outside stairs running up this.
So it's stated.
All right, you all set, Roland?
Accepted, yes.
I'll call the roll. Mike Foot?
I'm about to accept this application twenty twenty zero one oh five for four oh one Lakeside Ave.
And Roland, do I hear a second?
Second, I didn't.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. You're, I'm sorry, we're voting. That's my bad. Okay, and I vote in the affirmative. So it looks like you have your your existing thing. Now, please check in with the planning department. Okay, and if something goes wrong with the, that you can't get the staircase on that to accomplish what you need, you don't forget, you can't come more than how into that setback. You do, you're going to have to come back. Okay?
Okay, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. You have a good day. Good evening.
Okay, next on our agenda is application Z zero two zero two zero twenty twenty oh one oh six, which is a request for a variance from section two thirty-five, thirty-five B, which is the side setbacks to convert approximately sixty square feet of second-story unfinished attic space into living space. This applicant is Thomas Labrie of Butterfly House LLC. Is somebody here to represent them? Anyone here to speak to this application?
I have a, I have a janitor on the line.
What application are we talking about? I didn't hear it.
One oh eight Academy Street.
One oh eight Academy Street.
Or Butterfly House.
Butterfly House.
I don't see the applicant. And I haven't had any communication with them.
All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion to table this until next week or anybody else?
Week or next month?
Sorry, next month. It will be known next week, yes. Do you have a motion to table this until next month?
Uh, so motion, let's move on.
Do I have a second, Roland?
Move on.
Okay, just a motion to move this to next month. Yes.
Can we have a motion for Mr. Foot? Do we have a second? I didn't catch it.
Roland?
Second.
Okay. I'll call the roll to this is to move application Z, Z zero zoning application twenty twenty dash zero one oh six next month. I'll call the roll. Mike Foot?
Uh, motion to leave it till next month?
Yes, okay. Roland, yes?
Yes, to the motion.
Okay, Gail votes yes, so this is hung up next month. Our next application is Z zero twenty twenty dash zero one zero nine. This is for Douglas T. Garden and Cheryl Knight, two fifty-six Guilford Avenue. Is the applicant here or online? And if they are, could they please?
Uh, we're here in person.
Okay, that's great. Tell us what you want to do.
All right, we're coming before you tonight, asking for a variance. All right, asking for a variance on this to allow for a six-foot fence. I understand that the regulation currently is four feet. We're seeking a six-foot fence for personal safety reasons. Uh, neighbors and the adjoining house, or I shouldn't say adjoining, a budding house at two fifty have had four pit bulls. One of which bit a friend of theirs and has since been taken by the pound. There are three remaining pit bulls. One of which has bitten one of the boys. And the other one, I believe his name was Jules, bit this stack pole and she went to the hospital. She have, uh, get looked at and medical attention received. On that day, my girlfriend told me what happened. I went out and got a six-foot fence. Because if you look at a satellite picture on the CIA tech picture, you'll see the two driveways are very close proximity to one another. It's about fifteen feet between the two houses. Uh, pit bull can cross that in no time flat. And since we park in that driveway and the other dirt driveway on the other side to make it easy for either vehicle to get in and out without having to move one, one of us is going to be in danger if these pit bulls get out. Uh, which they have from time to time. They have some young boys in the house and as everybody knows, sometimes young boys don't pay attention to what's going on around them. And the dogs get by them. They'll jump on the cars. They come running out. They see us, but given the history of bites, we're concerned for ourselves. To that end, I wanted to submit, it's part of our application, uh, number three, the girlfriend gave testimony that the pit bull Jules, which is one of the remaining pit bulls in the residence at two fifty, has cornered her in a pop-up greenhouse that we have on the opposite side of our property during the course of the last summer. She had closed up one end of the greenhouse, tended to her flowers and turned and this dog was standing in the doorway blocking her exit from the greenhouse. This is a problem. So we're seeking a variance to allow for the six-foot
Is it a fence problem or is it an animal control problem?
Really good question.
We want the fence because anybody that comes to our house, their carport is where their door is, main door. They open that door and those dogs come over after us. I have a hole in my brand-new car on the inside because the dog jumped up at my window.
Once again, is it a fence problem or an animal control problem?
Well, animal control is aware of the problem.
What are they doing about it?
And they took the one dog, Major. And that dog is gone. The other three remain and to my knowledge, no further action has been taken on the part of the animal control officer. If there has been actually taken, there's nothing that we're aware of.
Three dogs are still there.
Yeah, three dogs.
Three of them.
Okay.
It's three dogs you had. I thought when I saw this app that you were the ones that wanted, had to own the dog. Wasn't supposed to keep your dogs in.
This is what it is.
We're, we're the owners of two fifty six.
We just want the fence the week we have today because the dogs come over. They dig up my flowers. I was on the ground.
Why did they not control their dogs? Why did they not pay for a fence? Why did they not have control of their own animals? Why are you taking the
Because we want to be, we don't want to get bit by them and attacked by them. Oh, I have a granddaughter that's nine years old that I do not want to see one of those dogs take her down.
No, I don't blame you.
Yes, I do.
I don't understand why dogs like that are allowed in the cities of La Corte.
I'm not here to address that. All I'm here to address is allowing for our personal for safety. That's all we want. We want the six-foot fence.
Gate across the front? Are you going to?
Again, referring to the satellite picture of the CIA tech. The fence extends from the telephone pole straight back to approximately the front part of the garage, not touching the garage, but about six or eight feet.
So the fence is already up?
The fence is already up, yes.
And you're asking now after the fact?
I was not aware that there was a, that this was a violation of any statute. What we're doing partly is replacing a fence that existed when we bought the property thirteen years ago. And just continuing it from the corner of the garage. Approximately, again, on that satellite picture, from approximately where the red line, outline is inside property line up to the telephone pole. The reason we went that much further is because of, again, the proximity of their driveway to our driveway. This would afford us protection from the dogs coming out if they're in a pad mood, whatever. Gives us half a chance to get into our vehicles. A four-foot fence, anybody that's familiar with a pit bull knows that a pit bull could leap a four-foot fence without even thinking about it.
And it can run around the end of it if there's not a front on it and you're not fully gated. Well, if you're taking the position that you're going to build a fence for protection, then it needs to be, you need to fully enclose your own area to protect
We would gladly, if we get approval, we will gladly do that.
At what, a twelve-foot fence? I don't know. It just seems to me, I'm a little torn here on approving a six-foot fence in perpetuity. Maybe if it's a six-foot
I don't think a fence is the answer.
I don't either, actually.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, Mike and Roland, I think this, this is not a zoning issue. This is a
We didn't have any problems until these people moved in and then they started getting pit bulls. And then they got another pit bull. They gave that one away. Then they got another pit bull, which is the one that got me in the greenhouse and is coming after me.
Once again, it's an animal control issue.
I understand that, but
We just want some protection because I can't even go to my car because they're right there. They're right there. I'm going to get there.
Due to the fact that animal control has been notified and no further action has been taken. We, we reserve the right to protect ourselves.
Maybe what you need to do is go to the local newspaper and show them what's going on over there.
We're just trying to keep this as low key as possible.
I ask you to stop talking now and, and I just, I just want to, I just want to get a couple of things. I'm going to ask you a few questions and I want to hone in on this. You're asking for a variance to put a six-foot fence, one that's already there, correct?
Uh, correct.
Is it your intent the whole front of the yard with a gate?
The whole front of the yard? No.
Okay.
No, it's just as a barrier between the two property lines. Because if the dog has to go out and around it, the dog would virtually have to go out into the street to get to us.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I, for the time being, I don't think I have any more I don't think I have any more questions for you. I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask the zoning director, if you don't mind. So I, I'd like to ask you to take a seat, please. I'll bring you back up, you know, okay? And what is, what is the purpose of our fence ordinance? I'm going to get to you, ma'am. Don't worry. I, I just want to get a few things on it. Dean, what is the purpose of our fence ordinance?
In the case of this situation.
Purpose of the fence ordinance? Why?
The, the purpose of the fence ordinance is to regulate the height of the fence in the front setback area of the lot.
Okay.
Other than that, we don't have any fence regulations. The state does. But we, we want to control the height of a fence as it's along the street or on the side property line as part of the front setback area. Just for aesthetic reason, more than anything else.
We had this situation down on Winnebago Avenue a couple of years ago.
Okay, Roland.
And they, the, the fence was built at four feet at the street level, and then it kind of went up uh, about two feet, so that cars coming down would not be blocked uh, out when they, when they were looking, uh, when they were on that side of the street. Remember that when they, the street went up?
Roland, we got a big agenda here. We got. We have another question for Dean.
There should have been pictures uh, in the packet that we provided.
The pictures.
Along with the application.
We have the pictures. Dean, do we need, do people need to apply for a permit to erect a fence in this city?
No, they do not. They need to follow the regulations, but they do not need a building permit.
So had they built a four-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence, we would not be here tonight.
Correct. And the resolution for the one that was on Winnebago Ave is the first part of it, which blocked view for pulling in and out, was built a little lower.
Right.
And then the rest of it could be six feet.
Exactly.
Right.
And so it didn't impede any of the uh, view for pulling in and out or of ingress or egress for property.
Right.
Okay.
And what's a setback for that fence? What's a setback from the road that goes four feet?
Twenty-five feet.
Well, in this case, twenty-five, because that's the front setback. I mean, it depends on the zoning, but.
So if this is.
And this fence currently, as pictured, runs all the way to the rear of the property?
We didn't finish yet because of the domain care. We haven't got it finished yet.
Okay, what happens in the rear of the property, I don't care about. I only want to know how much of this fence is in this.
Can I show you these pictures that shows that it doesn't block the road?
I, I. Okay. The issue before us right now is, all I'm going to say is, is that we have a fence that's two feet higher than what it's supposed to be, okay?
This goes right out to the um.
Goes right up to the property line. So the entire six-foot from the front of the house, this is what I want to know, is how much of this fence is in the front setback? Karen, I guess that's a question for you.
Okay. Actually, I'm not muted here. Now, with a twenty-five-foot setback, almost the entirety of that fence would be sitting in the front setback. I had emailed you the map indicating where the setback starts and ends. The property line is approximately eight feet from edge of pavement. There is a telephone pole there, which is a, a good point of reference. From that pole, you would have to go twenty-five feet back. That's your front set, setback.
Which is just about to the front of the house.
Okay, now.
Yeah, that portion, there's that in the garage.
Okay, I'm, all right.
Virtually, yes.
And that's right where the door opened up.
Can I have just one of you speak at a time, please? Um, Mr. Teagarden, I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
No, I don't want to go outside.
Um. All right. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to close, not close this public hearing. Uh, there isn't a butter here that has something to say. I believe she's online. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to talk about the dog. I don't care about the dog. The only thing I care about is the fence and the zoning and the land that goes to it. The issue with the dogs belongs in a different forum. It's either with the police department, with Belknap County Superior Court, you can file for an injunction. There are a lot of recourse that you can take. The zoning board is not one of them. I'm only here to discuss a twenty-five-six-foot of fence that is too tall for the setback that it is in. Do you have anything to, to the butter? Could you please come forward, identify yourself, and state what it is about this fence that you like or don't like?
Are you speaking to Libby?
Are you Libby? Are you the butter?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not a butter. I live across the street. I do, my na- my name officially is Elizabeth Newell.
Okay, great.
I live at two forty-nine Guilford Ave, which is across the street.
Yeah.
Um, I, I drive up and down Guilford Ave a lot. Um, and I have not found any type of visual impairment from the fence that is already there. When Mr. Javier West Ortiz, or whatever he goes by for a name, parks his ramp truck in the front yard, it does block um, the sightlines to the road for the traffic that's coming up, you know, from Union Avenue onto Guilford Ave. Um, so that's, that's the only statement I'm going to make that there, you know, when he does park that there, um, he does, it does obscure your vision, but the fence has not obscured any type of visibility at all for any cars coming in and out.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other, yeah, okay. Um, are there any other people here that would like to speak for or against this fence? I do not want to hear about the dogs. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to give it to you, Mr. Teagarden. We'd make very brief closing comments. Again, I only want to hear about the fence. I don't want to hear about the dogs. The dogs are not our problem. The fence is our problem. This is, that we are allowing something, if we allow this, to go forward in perpetuity. Okay, do you understand that? This is forever and ever. Long after you're dead, long after I'm dead, long after the dogs are dead. Okay? This, this is allowing something that is not allowed by our ordinance. And I need you to tell me why we should allow that to happen.
Well, the only reason that this is, this fence was put up at all, uh, we've been neighbors with this. I can't, I can't address that without addressing the dog issue. Dogs, being the type that they are, and I know you don't want to hear it, ma'am, but it is a safety issue.
But it's not our safety.
And that's, and that's the only reason that the fence continues up from the corner of the garage out to the street is to afford us some protection. The remaining portion of the fence on either side of the house is replacing a fence that was already there when the property was purchased.
And that's fine.
So the only addition is this, and the only reason that it's six-foot is to afford the protection because the animal could jump a four-foot fence. I would ask a question.
Yeah.
Would it be preferable for it to be a chain-link type fence up uh, on the last portion to afford them better visibility?
I can't answer that question. I can only deal with what's in front of me right now. Um, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to bring this back to the board. Um, what do you guys think about this? I mean, I.
I have one question.
Okay, Roland, all right, great. Does anyone else?
Does that fence make your life more bearable?
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, what is that?
He asked if the fence made us more, uh, the fence made our life more bearable.
Oh, yeah, it makes it, it makes you feel much more secure because it's not just wide open between us and the house.
When I go get in my car, I know there's a fence there. I can get in my car. When it wasn't there, I would look out my door to see, and if those dogs came, I ran for my car.
Thing is, is if the dogs, they're, uh, the door opens into the carport, and the dogs can see you from there without a fence. If it's a four-foot fence, they can still see you because I'm taller than four foot tall. And they, they could then come out and jump the fence. This is the only reason that we're looking for this variance.
That answers my question.
You know, I, I understand that it may not be uh, exactly that, uh, to Ms. Ober's uh, point. But given that the pound had been uh, talked to and they went to the property and took one of the dogs, and yet the other three remain that they're aware of and have taken no further action, we don't feel that we have any other course of action but to put a fence.
Well, I wouldn't defund the police, now would I?
The, the door is right here, that fence is here, and my car is usually right here. So I don't have much time to get to my car.
You know, the fence in a straight line, when I look at here, I see this curve. Has this been built for any survey or general use?
We just put it up for now, and we were going to have somebody come back in the spring to do it professionally for us. We just put it up now to protect ourselves.
Uh, it is uh, well within the property lines. Uh, again, if you look at the satellite map, uh, the property line actually virtually touches the back corner of their carport. So we are well within our property lines as far as that goes. And it's more just to completely obscure the view of the animals leaving the house.
Have you ever talked to these people and asked them why?
Be afraid. I don't want to have to play hide and seek.
All right, cool.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm going to close. Um, is anyone else in the audience? I'm going to ask Mr. Mr. Teagarden.
The dogs sit in the kitchen window right here, and they see us from our phone.
Yeah, we do understand why you put up the fence, okay? Um, I'm going to bring this back to the board unless there's anyone in the audience that has anything to say about this fence. Going once, going twice. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Um, Mike, Roland, what do you guys think? I mean.
I think, once again, we're dealing with something that's been installed, and so we're behind the power curve in that's an actor of the fact thing.
Right.
Right? In this here, I would uh, this, you know, some stuff. I just don't think this is the right venue for it. My, my short inclination is to make this section of the fence that's over the six feet, four feet, or the whole chain link, but this is still a fence that's, I don't know, I just don't know that they should be building it. I think it should be on the other people who have the dogs.
Right. I, I mean, I, I agree with you that this is the wrong venue for this. I, I, um, I, you know, I, I mean, these folks belong in court. They don't belong in zoning board.
They don't belong at ZB, eh?
They don't belong here. Um, but they built this fence. We have a six-foot fence. We have an ordinance that says that the maximum height of a fence within the twenty-five-foot setback area is four feet. The question before us, gentlemen, is do we ask them to take down the fence and reinstall a four-foot fence or not? Have they met the criteria of the variance? Those five criteria that they have to meet are the reason for this fence.
Well, I don't think it adds to the uh, value of the properties around that we start to make non-conforming fences on one of the most um, traveled roads in and out of the city of Laconia. This is just, you're asking me and I'm feeling, this is how I feel. I'm sitting here for some years.
Right.
Well, the my, the problem I have is these people have gone to proper channels.
Well, they didn't have.
Dog officer in the police department, and nothing has changed. They took one of four dogs away. Uh, the three other dogs, they should have taken away with them, but they didn't.
Roland, we're not here to talk about the dogs. We're only here to talk about the fence. Um, so I'm going to ask.
It wouldn't be offensive if there weren't any dogs.
Um, but, but what I'm saying is, is, is would granting this variance be contrary to the public interest? Yes or no?
Yes.
Well, for visuals.
If those dogs get out and start roaming, you're going to find out. Some kids are coming home from school or going to school in the morning. They may get to beat those dogs.
And I don't think we're here to talk about the dogs. We're here to talk about the fence. The next people who live there may not have dogs. We would still have a fence. Do you see what I'm saying?
All right. So on this here, one of the things that gets me is I look at these pictures and I recognize what it is, and I won't go into some of the other things that get me. But in this twelve-foot section, would it be acceptable if it were a chain-link fence? It would break the visual line of the people coming down the road. What it does is it breaks up the way the natural view of the neighbor is. Then it blocks vision, I guess. So why isn't it twenty-five feet tall?
Exactly. Um, you know, why six?
Why six?
Um, I, I asked Dean what the purpose of our fence ordinance is. Um, it's old, it's an old ordinance. I think it was passed in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, the number four feet appears to be standard with what other communities have in their front setback. I believe that's why it's there. A chain-link fence, I, I drove down there. It doesn't block the sightline. Um, it's sort of in a stretch of the road where it doesn't block the sightline. It breaks up the continuity, but it doesn't in, it, it doesn't impede with pedestrian traffic. It, it, it doesn't impede with, with the traveled way. It's just a matter of, we have an illegal fence here and you're in perpetuity. Um, a chain-link fence would probably be less obtrusive and more aesthetically pleasing than the, a solid wooden fence that we have there now because it is inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. That, that is, is sort of where I'm going with this. This is, this is not a neighborhood of, of fences. This, this is this, um.
But certainly if they stayed within the bounds of what is allowed in that twenty-five feet, or in fact, a four-foot fence, and might I suggest chain length, then we wouldn't even be here.
I don't think a chain-link fence is the answer at all. With a stockade fence, you can't, the dogs can't see through the fence. With a chain-link fence, the dogs can see through the fence. They can run down around the fence and run up to meet the people. Once they learn that they can run down around by the telephone pole and back up into the other people's yard, they're going to continue to do that. So I don't think the chain-link fence is the answer.
How about a stake in the middle of Guilford Ave?
Right.
Nice stake in the middle of Guilford Ave?
I mean, you know, I mean, we, we could just go the whole Spanish way and have them put in it enclosed. You know, I, I mean, what I'm saying is, is we have an ordinance. We have an ordinance that says we only allow four-feet fence, four-foot fences in the setback. It's no purpose for the ordinance other than perhaps aesthetics and history and fences, and I don't want to get into all of that. So I guess what I have to do is, is go to the five criteria that we have to all say yes to about why that is, and that's why I'm doing this. And I, and, and as far as the public interest, in the long-term public interest, is this fence in the long-term public interest of the city of Laconia?
What happens when the dogs move or someone else moves?
Can I say something to that, please? When the dogs move or.
Gail.
If they move, they'll gladly take the fence down. Gladly. We had a nice neighbor that was there before they moved that. We would gladly.
So a new world order?
Yeah. Um, it, 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 is this in the spirit of the ordinance? And I know most of these are disgusted with it. But I mean, is this what the city intended when they built a fence? When they put, when they enacted a fence ordinance, for some reason, the city council chose to enact a fence ordinance. Is this what they envisioned when they put that ordinance into place?
Once again, I think the wrong people are building a fence.
Okay. Um, what about the, um, substantial justice? Um, substantial justice is defined, is the facts of this, I mean, the variance is, um, when considering substantial justice, the criteria, whether the gain to the general public by denying the variance outweighs the loss to any individual or whether it is consistent with the area's present use. Is this fence consistent with the area's present use?
Not that I see in these pictures. I do not see something else either way, up north or south like this.
Okay. Um, what if anything does this fence have on the value of the surrounding properties? I don't see that it has any, um, wooden fence. I, 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 I don't see that it has any.
No more than an unbolted law.
Oh, yeah.
Try to sell their house without that fence there and those three dogs.
Well, the dogs, we can't talk about the dogs, Roland. The dogs are not our problem. That's another, that's another person's problem.
You keep saying that, but if the fence, if the dogs weren't there, the fence wouldn't be there.
Chicken or the egg?
Yeah. That was two and a half years.
And then no fair, we have, and then we have hardship. Where is our hardship here?
Hardship is imposed by the neighbors having unruly dogs, which should be brought in control in some other place. I'm torn here, you know? I get it. I get it, you know? It's, I, I don't, I don't think the fence is in conjunction with the neighborhood. I think I am inclined to stick to the rules.
Okay, I'm inclined to stick to the rules as well. So do I have a motion in that direction?
All right. Yeah. I'll take a motion to deny. I think this, um, fence should be built within, um, the, uh, constraints of our existing ordinances. So I make a motion to deny zoning ordinance 2020 dash zero one oh nine for 256 Guilford Ave. Uh, this is relieved from 235 39D and this is a six foot high fence for, uh, safety. Now recognizing safety, they can build a fence within the constructs of what are available in our ordinances. Once again, the variance would be contrary because it's making a, um, non-conforming use. Spirit of the ordinance is observed. You can have a fence, it just shouldn't be a fence that's six feet tall that blocks the views in the neighborhood. Understanding what the values are, what needs to be done next door. Once again, there are other avenues to take care of this with. Um, granting the variance is substantial justice is negligible. Once again, you can have a fence. And even if it were a chain link fence at four feet, you could put sliders in it, which would block the view of the dog. At four feet, it wouldn't quite be that way and it would look that well. Moving right along.
Along, yes.
The, uh, values of the surrounding property as well, this certainly is different and contrary to our, um, current ordinances. Any discussion on that could be brought further and other things also. And, um, I'm, I'm feeling that the hardship isn't necessarily created by this property. So what I have a problem here is granting a variance for hardship that's not created by this property.
Right.
Once again, there's other venues to work with that one. And that's why it's not totally unreasonable, but could be built to conform with current ordinances.
Okay. Um, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Roland?
I'm not going to second it.
And I'll second it. I'm gonna call this for a vote. Is there any more discussion on the motion as it is made? Only the motion. The only thing I wanna say about the motion on number three, substantial justice, is that it is not consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And under the hardship, uh, there is no hardship that is, that runs with the property for this. So I'm gonna call the roll. Mike? Yeah, you're next.
Uh, well, uh, vote to deny.
Okay, Roland?
Vote to deny.
So you're agreeing with Mike?
What?
You're voting, the motion is in the negative. We have made a motion to disallow this. This means I have to take the fence down and either put nothing there or a four foot fence.
I'm voting for the motion.
Our vote, okay, great. And I vote for the motion. So it is three to nothing that, um, we deny this variance. Thank you very much. I guess we'll move on. Um, you do have, I do want to say you have 30 days to come before us and apply for us to reconsider it. You will have a full board next month, so there will be five of us here. Okay?
Can we have to pay $175 again?
No. The, the, the planning department will explain to you everything that you need to do in order to.
Can we just put on the back of them, please?
Pardon?
Yeah, it implies.
Call the office tomorrow. I'll explain it to you tomorrow.
Yeah. If you go to the office tomorrow, I also counsel you to get an attorney or talk to an attorney about going to court. You have protections. We're just not from us, unfortunately. We do empathize with you. We do. But it, you're, you're in the wrong place. It's like you're trying to.
We've, we've gone the other avenue, Smith. And were it not for the other departments of the city not doing their job, the fence would not go out through the road. And I understand you not wanting to address the dogs, but the dogs and the size of the fence are inseparable. Because were it not for the dogs, the fence would not continue that far out. You can't separate one from the other. The dogs caused the fence to be where it is at the height that it is.
Okay, Madam Chair.
It's not bad enough. The speed limit there is 30,000 an hour. And if I'm like 45 and we risk our lives that way, now I got a dog next door.
Now, please contact Karen. She's gonna tell you how to go through the appeal and what your, what your recourse is from this point on. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah. Uh, we still.
I'm sorry.
Where's Phil?
Uh, I think Phil is, 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 is Phil, is Attorney Bureyard still out there? Is he gonna wait?
Uh, he's gonna wait.
Okay, that's, because I, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to get, um, I, I don't, I don't know. It's already, what time is it?
Mike Delvecchio just arrived.
Mike Delvecchio just arrived? Okay, but, but Attorney Bureyard has left.
Correct.
That means Province Street is gonna go forward to next week. Okay?
January, next month.
Or next month. I apologize, I don't wanna do this next week.
Thank you.
On our list is a, a zoning request for 58 Edgewater Avenue. If Mike just arrived, do we wanna take a couple of minute break and let him get upstairs and get seated?
He's here.
Here.
Hot seat, turn it on, let's go.
The 58 Edgewater Avenue asked to continue to January. That was the one, uh, first thing in the meeting.
All right, and then we have 276, 2276. Number, number six here is 2276 Parade Road with a variance request. And this is from a Jennifer and Jennifer Mitchell. There's a variance and a special exception, I believe, that go jointly with this. And this is to, um, uh, request a variance from Article 7, Section 23541A, accessory dwelling unit. The variance is to, I think we should probably do the special exception first. Is this, what would you say, Dean? The variance is for the size of the ADU. The special exception is just to allow the ADU, correct?
Yes, I would give you there. Uh, I would give the special exception first because they could always build a smaller ADU.
All right. Pardon?
Jennifer is on the line.
Jennifer is on the line. Okay. Uh, Jennifer, thanks for joining us and, um, tell us what it is you need.
So, um, my parents are getting older and they're going to sell their house. And I would like to put a little unit on for them to live in. And we've been trying to design it and make it a little handicap accessible. And we just need the, I know it's 750 square feet, but, um, we really need the 250 square feet more to make it fit in what we're trying to accomplish for them. It's not gonna encroach on anything. It's all within, it's not gonna be in any setbacks. It's not, um, it's not really viewable by anyone. It's, there's a state forest behind me and it's mostly behind my garage. And. And, um, my family owns that land and the 22 acres behind us that abuts the forest. And I have family on both sides. And it's kind of the whole point of our living up here was so that we could, um, take care of them when they get older. So, um, it's gotten to that point.
Oh, no, I, 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 I do, that I do understand. Um, so the special exception is what we're dealing with now. And just so that you know, a special exception is something that is, if, if something is allowed in a particular property, which this is, then you just have to satisfy these, the, the, the eight, looks like seven or eight criteria that are listed on the, on the piece of paper. Okay? And then the variance, which goes to the size of the accessory dwelling unit, is what we'll deal with next. Okay? And we're gonna take them in total. I just want you to understand the procedure.
Okay.
Okay? So the short version is, is for right now, for the special exception, you wanna build an accessory dwelling unit for your parents?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you have anything else that you wanna add? I, I, I don't know where. I know you're out on Parade Road and I, I think you're pretty rural and you're not going, the only thing you need is an accessory dwelling unit for your parents.
Right.
Okay. Um, any board members have any questions for Ms. Mitchell? Mike, oh, welcome, Mike.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm a little lost here.
Is, Mike, what are you still there or?
I'm trying.
We got technical difficulties. Okay.
Yeah, it's probably my fault.
Oh, okay.
Can I get back to you now? Do I do this?
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't see what's on there.
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry.
Oh, you still got technical difficulties. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, are you back with us, Mike?
I am.
Okay. Um, what we have in front of us is a request by Jennifer Mitchell on 2276 Parade Road to, we need to decide whether we're gonna give her a special exception to build an accessory dwelling unit on her property there. And she's basically told us that she needs this because, um, she needs, she's adding on to her house. So her folks who are aging have a place that they can stay safely so she can keep an eye on them. Um, the variance, uh, we have to approve whether or not she can have that first. Um, are you up to speed on this, Mike Delvecchio?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do any of you guys have any questions for Ms. Mitchell about the unit itself? Not the size, the unit. Because we have to do these one at a time.
I, I do have one question and I'm not quite up to information here. Where is this located on Parade Road again?
Um, do you know where the Lutheran Church is?
Yeah.
The next, um, next after the Lutheran Church is my parents' house. That's a yellow house and then I'm the next house.
So there's like three houses on the west side right there north of the church? All right. Anybody have questions?
I know. I understand why they want it.
And it seems to be all behind the house?
Little on the side of the garage and the rest is all behind.
All within the setbacks?
Yes.
No encroachments?
No.
Hardly imbued Parade Road?
Right.
Okay, um, anybody have any questions of the applicant for the special exception only? We're gonna get into the size of this later.
Right.
Okay. All right. And if that's the case, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm, I'm gonna open this up to public comment. This comment is whether or not we can allow this woman to have an accessory dwelling unit at this point in time. Okay? Does anyone in the, uh, audience or online have anything to say about this application for or against? Okay, I, I don't see anyone out there, so I will close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board. Um, she wants an ADU. I, 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 I don't see any reason why she can't have one as far as the special exception goes. So I would entertain a motion. So I would entertain a motion. At this point in time, we are not considering the size of the ADU. We are only considering whether or not she can have an accessory dwelling unit. Okay, you all understand that?
Sure.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the special exception for an ADU unit. Let's see if I have this right here. And this is relief from Article 23448, number eight. Do I have this right, this one is 200?
One is for a variance for the size of the unit, Mike, which is a little bigger.
This says special exception and then it says additional 250 square feet. I'm wondering if my paperwork is correct here.
Correct here because they basically say the same thing, but what I...
No, variance first is what this says, but I thought a special exception was first.
A special exception is first. So I think they may have been out of order in the packet that's in your...
No, I think the rating is...
Oh, okay. Okay, that could be too, so.
Right. So the variance here is filled out as a special exception and the special exception was a variance. Am I seeing that correctly? Because this, this says special exception request an additional 250 square feet. And this variance request an accessory dwelling unit for extended family.
So you should be looking at Application 112.
112, they don't...
112 is here.
What do you do?
111 is a variance.
Right, so this information is...
Yeah, those two pieces are reversed, yeah, I see what you're saying.
All right, just, one would play croquet, let's play the whole by the same rules. All right. So this special exception for the accessory dwelling unit is that actually 234418? Is that actually what it is?
23541.
See what I'm saying, 235418 over here.
Okay.
I'm staying, this is difficult.
Mine only says 111 or 112.
We're dealing with 112 now, Roland.
All right, so for 112 is a special exception.
Right.
For 235448.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay, the use of the request is, is authorized in this chapter. This is for additional housing for full families. And it will not create any undue, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. No, it doesn't seem like it would. Will not overload any public water drainage sewer systems or any other municipal systems, or will we have any significant increase in stormwater runoff? No. And will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire protection schools, or solid waste disposal. And unless anybody can show any special provisions, I don't know. It seems like it is currently fulfilled. And it will not create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public or be detrimental or out of character with the neighborhood. Location is prosent, so residential area added to the residence. This is consistent with the master plan and allows us to improve upon a property for the betterment of a family to use it.
Okay. Um, I... Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to grant a special exception under Article 235, Section 41A, special exception 0202, or 2020112, to allow an accessory dwelling unit at 2276 Parade Road in Laconia. I'll call the roll, Mike Foot.
Vote to accept.
Yep, Mike Del Vecchio?
Accept.
And Roland Mayhew?
Accept.
Yeah, we all were accept. So we have granted you the accessory dwelling unit that you need. Now we're going to get to the variance and discuss why it needs to be bigger and what the city council has allotted. And before I ask you to speak to that, I'd like Dean to explain, this is a relatively new ordinance. Dean was our planning director when this ordinance was passed. Dean, can you explain to us why the city council opted to make it a maximum size of 750 square feet? I think that's what we need to know in order to understand why we need, we may need to make this bigger or not.
So the intention here is to create what colloquially has been considered an in-law apartment and as opposed to an entire separate living space. Now, granted, it is a separate living space, but the idea here was to create a small unit of housing that could house one or two people and not be oppressive to neighbors. The idea was, you know, people were thinking that if you didn't put a limitation on it, someone who had a thousand square foot ranch would come in with a thousand square foot ADU if they had the space. So there was trying to be a limitation so that the ADU is not overwhelming the property. There is the, the option here, if the house is big enough that the ADU can be bigger than the 750, and I'm not sure what the square footage of the main house is. But if it was larger than 3,000 square, I don't know.
I'm trying to remember the origin. If it's larger than 3,000 square feet, then it could be 25% of the floor. If you have a 4,000 square foot house, you could have a 1,000 square foot ADU. I don't know, Karen, do you know what the square footage of this?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay. I was going to say, if it's big enough, then we may not even need to do this variance.
Well, I think we've already done the numbers, so that's why we're here.
Right, the total house is approximately 1,900 square feet.
Yeah, okay. So 750 was the number that was chosen and, you know.
I think the idea was that that's the size of a medium-sized standard apartment-type situation, and that's what it was hoping to recreate.
All right, great, and then I'll...
We also put a minimum size because we want to have, you know, someone backup a travel trailer to the house and say, okay, here we are, that's my in-law apartment, you know. So it could go both ways, but in this case it was 750 for a maximum.
Okay. Now, go back to the applicant. Ms. Mitchell, why is it that you need this to be bigger than the 750 square feet allowed by our ordinance?
There's a couple reasons. The biggest reason is that we're trying to make it very handicap accessible. So just in case one of them has to be in a wheelchair and... So we've been playing with the layout, and I think you see the layout there. And to make it so that you could get around and...
Okay, and... All right, I mean, I guess, like I said, because procedurally we had to do these the two separate things. That's just what I wanted to hear. So your desire, what I'm hearing is, is at some point you want to make this handicap accessible. And 750 square feet does not give you enough space.
Right.
To do that. And you have, how big is your lot?
Two acres.
You have a two-acre lot, so this is in rural Route 1, so you're not in an urban lot, you're more in a rural...
RR2?
Yeah, RR2. So, you know, this isn't, this isn't what, in my opinion, this isn't what Dean said, that we're asking, we're asking someone with a thousand square foot house to put another thousand square foot house on the same lot. It, you know, she's out in a rural area, is what I'm understanding this to be. It's not a city lot, it's not a third of an acre.
And Dean, wasn't there a percentage of size to the ADU to the house?
If the house exceeds 3,000 square feet, then there's a percentage. So it's 25%. So if you have a 4,000 square foot house, you can get a 1,000 square foot ADU. In this case, we don't have a 3,000 square foot, it's 1,900. So we're working within the numbers that the ordinance spelled out, which is 300 to 750, or 350 to 750.
But it's within that range. Just for clarification, so everyone is aware, the first floor is about 1,080 square feet, and then 900 on the second floor. First, your footprint, your footprint is about 1,000 square feet, if that makes sense. It's a two-story home.
It has a ceiling and part of it, so.
Okay.
It doesn't look excessively outsized in relationship to existing house.
No.
All right, dear applicant, do you have anything else you want to add to this before we close the, before we open it up for public hearing? Ms. Mitchell?
Mike?
Oh, okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? No, I don't, online?
No.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Anyone got any thoughts on this? Roland, Mike, Mike?
It doesn't seem unseemly aligned to me.
No, it doesn't to me either. Roland?
No, it sounds all right to me, I have no problem with it.
I don't either. I don't think we want it to get any bigger than 1,000 square feet. She's asked for 1,000. I think we should, I think where whoever makes the motion, I'd like to keep it at 1,000. Don't want to get out there and find out it's 1,200 or 1,300 square feet, just because she's in a rural area. I think we have to make sure that it stays to that 1,000 square feet. Is that acceptable to you guys?
If you approve, I'll, when they give a building permit, they will not exceed 1,000.
All right, whatever. Then, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
This is going to be for the variance, correct?
Variants to allow her to exceed the 750 square feet.
And so I make a motion to approve, something board variance application 2020 to 0111 for 2276 Parade Road. And the applicant is asking a variance from Article 7, Section 23541A. Is that correct? Do you have that correct?
23541A, Section 8.
Section 8, accessory dwelling unit to allow for his 1,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit. One moment there. Okay. So granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest for adding 250 square feet, and we're not moving into any setbacks. The spirits would be observed because we're trying to create an accessory dwelling for a family and to make this proper layout work for impeded people having access, handicapped access, would, would make the project easier. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it'll allow a family to utilize a property and care for the elders as we all age. The value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. This is keeping in line with other dwellings around it, it's not breaking out any oddities in the building. It all works with the community. And there are substantial relationships that it doesn't impede anybody else's use of their property, but allows these people to more properly utilize what is available for them for taking care of family and elders. And it's reasonable because it will not encroach on any setbacks. It will not impede anybody else's use again. I think it would be good for the property.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, then I'll call it to a vote, I'll do a roll call vote. Mike Foot?
Motion to approve, or vote to approve.
All right, Roland?
Vote to approve.
And Mike Del Vecchio?
I approve.
Okay, Gail, I approve. So you have your special exception and your thousand-foot accessory dwelling unit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was a unanimous vote of the board. Merry Christmas, Dean, thank you. And our last order of business, I believe, before we adjourn, Dean, you were going to give us a talk on what the city wants from its short-term rental ordinance and how it is the city would like us to interpret that.
Yeah, so for you that are here in the room, I gave you a handout. Got a blue stuff on it.
Do you have one? Okay. And then Gail, I sent you one, I don't know if you have, can bring it up on the screen. So I envision this as being kind of a question and answer type here, and then you can ask questions as you go along. I think that would be the best way to approach this. So, short-term rental is any rental in the city that is 14 nights or less. If someone is a three-month or a month or whatever, that is not considered a short-term lodging rental. So 14 nights or less.
And of course, this excludes things like hotels, motels, cottage colonies that were approved for commercial operation. It also includes rooming and boarding houses, as you know, they need to go get special...
And other approvals for boarding houses.
So it does not include those that are separate, not under the survey. So essentially includes residential units, even seasonal units. So some of the cottage colonies or motels, like for instance along Weir's Boulevard, that have been converted to condominiums, some of them are seasonal. Some of them are seasonal, some of them are year-round, but they would all be covered by this. It is allowed in the commercial resort, in the shorefront residential zone with a permit. No ZDA action required, so if you're in those two zones and you want to do a short-term rental, come down. Fill out the application, go through the process at the planning department. And assuming everything is okay, you get your permit. That no involvement from zoning board at all. It's also allowed in some other zones with some limitations. It is considered an accessory use. If the owner of the property lives in the property for a minimum of a hundred and fifty days a year. The intention here was for this to be your primary residence. It may be a situation where it's your primary residence, but you go down south for the winter or whatever. So you're not here all year long, but the intention here was. For a house that is used by the owner, and they're here a minimum of a hundred and fifty days a year. And then the rest of the time, they could either rent it out, or if they were going to go on vacation someplace and be away for a while. If they wanted to rent out the house while they were gone, they could do that.
Okay, uh, Dean, I have one question to ask.
Yeah.
I have a two-story, a two-family house, and I live in the bottom. And I'm in a smack dab in the middle of a residential area. And I'm going to do short-term rentals upstairs in my upstairs apartment, how does that apply to this?
Right, so.
I don't want to, in other words, I have an option to rent that apartment permanently to somebody.
Right, you could, obviously, if you're in a two-unit building or a three-unit or whatever it has to be, if you live in one of the units. Um, you have the option of renting out the other unit or units. On a normal, you know, annual basis or monthly basis, whatever. Or you could do short-term lodging in the other unit. Because you're in the property for a minimum of a hundred and fifty days a year, probably a three hundred and sixty-five days a year, but. So, there were a few properties that when the city council was talking about this. There was a few properties on, on Pleasant and Gale Street that fell in this category. They were a three-unit, two-unit, a three-unit, the owners are living in one unit. They're renting out the other units on short-term rental, and they can do that, again, they have to get a permit. But they do not need zoning board people to do that. That's one of the things that we do, is when they come in and say, okay, I, I live here, or I live here most of the year. We do a confirmation and figure out exactly how many days they really are there. We've had a couple of people come in and be very creative with. You know, they, they get to show us this calendar that they're here every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Sunday. For four months out of the year, so that ends up two hundred and fifty days or whatever it is, you know, and, and. And we're, we're like, yeah, but where do you, where are you the rest of the time? And the answer is, they're in their house down. In Massachusetts or Manchester or wherever they live, you know. This, this is their second home, this is their, uh, vacation home, and they may be up here a hundred and fifty days a year, but this is not their residence. And so, you know, we've had to work through that a little bit. But, so people do get creative, they were trying to confirm as best they can and. And, and to kind of fairen out the people who are trying to gain the system a little bit, and I. Want to pretend that we've been one hundred success, one hundred, one hundred percent successful in that, but I think we have been pretty well. Yes, Roland?
How do they prove they lived here a hundred and fifty days?
Well. One of the things that we're looking for is, where do you register your car, where do you register your mail? Those, those kinds of things, where does your mail go? You know, when we go to the tax card of a property, say, and I don't want to pick ourselves out, but you know, you self-doubt as an example because it's very common. We, we bring up the tax card, and the address is for, you know, Manchester, Hampshire, or, you know. Barnstable, Mass, or, or whatever it is, you know, okay. This unit of housing in Laconia is not your home, you know, where, where. This is not where you receive your mail, this is not where you register your car, all those kinds of things. It does get a little tricky sometimes, and, you know, we do the best we can. Like I said, we're not going to be a hundred percent accurate in figuring it out, but. We, I think we've done pretty good, and we, we raise the questions, and then, you know, their story kind of falls apart when we start, you know. So to answer your question, Gail, the short answer is, if you have a two-unit. You can live on one side, do short-term rentals on the other side. Again, you've got to get a permit, but you can do that, does not require ZDA involved.
And only for a hundred and fifty days?
I'm sorry?
If they have a two-unit, and they live on one side, and they rent the other side. Um, it can only be, for short-term rental, it can only be for a hundred and fifty days?
No, no, that would be bad. After that, they could do it, they could do it all the time if they wanted to. Yes. Yes, Mr. Pliss.
If you lived in a building, and let's say you're a resident of your building, you live downstairs and upstairs, you have. Two apartments that you could rent. Would you pay your two hundred and fifty dollars for each unit?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes. Yep.
And that's, is that an annual fee, Dean?
That's for two years. Two-year permit. Alright, so that's the accessory use provision. Do we have another provision for smaller seasonal properties? What we were trying to address here was things like the traditional summer camp. A lot of them are being torn down and Manchester's being built, but some of them still exist, so when you go along Lake Avenue with. Uh, East Shore Road and Pogus Park Road and those kinds of areas, there are still. Believe it or not, still some of these quote camps.
Okay.
That, that people have rented for years in the summer, and. The intention here was to not shut those people off just because. Of the whole thing that's going on with short-term rentals in other parts of the city. Uh, so we put in the provision that if. The seasonal property, and again, the May first, October thirty-first. Uh, situation. It's less than fourteen hundred square feet. Then you could do short-term rentals again, you got to get the permit, but you don't have to go to the ZDA. Uh, what I did when we came up with this part of it is, I kind of went through the tax cars up and down the streets that are all waterfront. This is where the seasonal camps are, I mean. The seasonal camps are on Elm Street or Pine Street or whatever, they're, they're all over water. So, I went through that, and for the most part, most of these things look like they were seasonal type situations were. Less than fourteen hundred square feet, there probably are a couple out there that are just a little bit bigger or whatever, but, you know, you gotta, gotta draw a line in the sand somewhere, so. That was the number we picked. And so when people come in and say, I have a seasonal camp, it's twelve hundred square feet or whatever it is, and we're looking at it. One of the other things we want to check to make sure is, is, is it truly seasonal, and, you know, we're looking for things like. What's the status of the water, what's the status of insulation, and those kinds of things. Most of these camps, they have to drain the water and shut everything off for the, for the winter. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at confirmation that this is truly a seasonal situation. Again, we're not going to be a hundred percent, but I think, you know, we can do that pretty, pretty easily. Once we start talking to people about the kinds of things we're looking for, if they're trying to pull a fast one on us. It becomes pretty obvious pretty quick that, you know, this is a fully insulated, you know. Winterized building, they could be using it all the time if they, if they really wanted to, you know, so, we look at that. So, the other limitation on that is they can only do it for fifteen separate rentals, or a maximum of a hundred and twenty nights. So, the idea was, you have a summer camp. Um, you know, May first, October thirty-first is more than fifteen weeks of sleep, but. If you could rent out your camp for fifteen times in the course of the year, you're probably doing pretty good in terms of maximizing your income. Uh, so we're just trying to, again, it's, it's a cutoff, just so that it's not all the time type of thing. Then we get into the special exceptions, and that's where you guys come in. And I want to emphasize that, even with the special exceptions. Um. A permit is still required, so that's the thing that triggers to us whether they got to come to the zoning board for special exception or not. They come in, they apply for the short-term lodging permit, because they want to do it.
Alright.
And we say, you don't tick off any of these boxes that I've already discussed, so therefore, you need a special exception. And, uh. As you know, the two types of special exceptions are the five years or more rental history. And the special community benefit thing, so let's talk about the five years of rental. I think you guys have done pretty good about, you know, setting a standard of what kind of information you want to see. Uh, for the history, the rental history, and I think that's appropriate, and that, and that, that's fine. Karen and I and the rest of the staff will, will be. Looking, you know, when someone comes in in the future now, we'll be looking, this is the kind of stuff that you've got to provide us, because this. This is what the board is going to ask for, and they're not going to grant anything until they get it. And your, and your history proves that that's true, that's, that's exactly what you've done. So, we can tell them right up front, you need to go to your rental agency, you get the history, or if you have it. You know, you've got to put together this documentation that shows the actual five-year history. So I think if we go forward, we'll be able to demonstrate with that one. Um, you know, we know what you're looking for now, and we can explain that to the applicants. So that's pretty straightforward, they can demonstrate that under the ordinance, the idea is that. You, you would grant a special exception, and I'm not saying that you have to, or maybe something that pops up. Um, as you know, for all of these special exceptions, the abutters will get notified. Sometimes the abuter, you know, makes, one of the abutters will come out and say, oh, we have nothing but problems with these rentals. You know, with this noise, or this, or this, or there's that, in which case you may not want to grant a special exception, even though they can demonstrate they had five years. So that certainly is within your purview, and within the realm of what you can, you know, can do. Under your, it is a discretionary thing, it's not a nomadic. Um. Just because they give you the documentation, doesn't mean that you have to grant it. I think you have to, not to grant it, but sometimes those things present themselves too.
More questions?
Okay.
Now, the special community, a question on that deal? Quick, a question on that deal?
I guess my, my only, my only question, and I think this is restating the obvious, is what is the purpose of regulating these in a tourist area? Um, and when the, when the city council discussed this, did they take into consideration that all the properties that have been under property management companies for years?
Yeah, that was talked about, so, so we see, there's a couple of things with the short-term lodging situation. The first one is. We did, we had a few well-known nodal, uh, trial trials, they were. You know, there was, it was party central every weekend, because you have a different group of people every weekend, so. Even if the police go and say, you got to quiet down for the next weekend, you got a whole other group in there, and the police are going to do it again, you know. Uh, they, so I won't go into great deals, you all heard the stories, so we had, we had a few of those. And we were trying to put some regulation in for the owners of these kinds of properties to understand their impact to the neighbors. And, you know, they're breaking their, raking in the money to rent out their properties, but there's an impact. To their neighbors who are not necessarily living in a particular area to make money, they're living, they're enjoying life, so this is definitely an impact. The second thing that came to be the forefront is. The concept of someone buying a unit of housing strictly for the purpose of renting it out. And because they can get. In many cases, particularly the places that are all waterfront, they can get two to three thousand dollars a weekend. For these rents. That's far more than they would ever get, say, on monthly rental, or anything like that, so. If you're, if you're marketing, unfortunately, now with Airbnb, VRDO, all those other organizations, very easy to market your property. It's, you know, it's available to whirl, to see, um, so your, your success rate is potentially. Is potentially higher, I mean, I mean, so. There was a concern that housing stock would be turned from year-round residential use. To the short-term lodging situation, which would shut out local people from, from the housing market. Uh, and, you know, we talked about the waterfront, but the reality is that. And you've seen it here with some of the special exceptions. This is going on throughout the city, in every part of the city, you know, there's short-term rental units on Baldwin and Pine Street. And, you know, Elm Street, everything else, you know, so it's all through the city for a variety of reasons. And people do the short-term rentals, they do Airbnb for a variety of reasons. And one of the reasons is, and this is the reason people can get so much money for these nice properties on the water particularly. Is, if you get two or three families with, with two or three people or four people in each family, so you've got. Nine, ten, eleven, twelve people. A three or four bedroomed house. Even though it's much more expensive, if you're cutting the, you know, if you're sharing the expense among three or four families. It's not a bad price, and it certainly is more convenient than each family getting a motel room and suffering. You know, all of the limitations that come with a motel room, that you don't have a place to cook food, and it's. Cramps and privacy and bathrooms and all that stuff, you know, so, again. Um, and so that's why people want to, you know, they want to be in a house. And whether you're doing two or three families, or whether it's just you got a larger family, you just, you know, it's, it's convenience. And for the money, you're getting so much more, but there are impacts, obviously. So, those are the two main reasons was to, to address the problem child. And also to address scooping up the housing stock, now, I will say one thing. This is probably, to my mind anyway, this is the only silver lining to the COVID crisis. From March to June, you couldn't do any short-term rentals, the state didn't allow it, the governor's order banned it. And.
I get your muffle a little bit.
Alright, so, from March to June, you could not do short-term rentals. Because the, the state banned it because of COVID restrictions.
Oh, I, oh, oh, okay.
So there were people, not just in Laconia, all through the country, and it's, I mean, obviously, this happened in a lot of states. For that, for that time period anyway. Um. A lot of people that had booked, you know, if you're the owner of a property, you're trying to do Airbnb. You've got bookings, all of a sudden, they've all canceled, because you can't travel, they don't want to travel, you know. You have no income, your expenses didn't go away, because you're still going to pay the property taxes, you're still going to pay the utilities and all that stuff, but you've got no booking. And so. I, I, I think the, the concept. And so I, I, I think the, the concept of this being investment vehicles. Go buy a house somewhere in a desirable place and then rent it out short-term rental, we got this weekend, that weekend. That investment idea is kind of blown out of the water, at least for a little while anyway. So that's not a factor right now. Now, it certainly could come back. So that can work and all that stuff certainly could be the kind of thing that when things more or less get back to normal. Um, whatever normal is, is going to be, uh, you know, we may be back into that situation where people are trying to do that again, but I, I really think there's a cautionary tale there that was not part of the discussion, you know, if you went on the internet search, you know, investment homes and those kinds of things. You'd get all kinds of articles about, oh, I'm doing this Airbnb, I'm making a lot of money, I'm doing this, I'm doing that, all of a sudden, the, the conversation on the internet changed to, I'm losing my shirt. You know, I got no money coming in, I've got all my expenses, et cetera, et cetera, you know? So it's a different conversation, and I'm not sure that the horror story goes away quickly. So it's, so that may get tampered down a little bit, but it's, it's still going to be, it's still going to be, you know, it's not going to go completely away. So those are the two primary reasons still that they're looking to regulate over and above the issues I'm going to get into when I discuss the actual permit process. But those are the two issues that people were concerned about. Problem child and what happens to our housing stock if everything goes Airbnb.
Which, which potentially in this area, um, you know, I mean, we are, I, I guess, the only thing I want to say about that is we are the only city that, that does regulate it. Okay?
Not necessarily, Gail. You'd have to go off.
There's, there's a, there's a few other communities in New Hampshire that.
I called North Conway out, which is another tourist there.
We were the first. We were definitely the first. Um, but yes, North Conway, Conway has come on board. Portsmouth has, uh, done a little bit more over and above their original thing that they had. Uh, so there's a few communities elsewhere that have done something. There are several that are considering it. I get calls from other, you know, planning directors or whatever through the state who know that we have it, and they say, okay, how did you do it? What's been the result and that kind of thing? So I think there is an interest. You're right. In other parts of the country, there have been some very stringent regulations going on. Boston, Massachusetts, Massachusetts in general has very strong, uh, short-term lodging regulations. Miami Beach, for instance, does, um, there are, I can't think of all of them right off the top of my head. On the other hand, there are also places like Lake George or those, or Bayou Colorado, idiots, you know, wide open and really, you know? So, but you know, as I mentioned, this occurs. You know, there are people on Bow Street or Baldwin Street or Pine Street that are doing it not for the vacation purposes so much as it is for things like, uh, a lot of them are doing it for traveling nurses or specialty doctors or those kinds of things. People are coming in to the area for a two or three month vacation or something like that. These people don't want to live in a motel for too long, they want to live in quote, a house, maybe they're going to share it with others that are in the same situation they are. There are people who like to do the short-term rentals that are business travelers. Now, again, business travel is way down, but before COVID, uh, they didn't want to be in a motel. And, you know, the bed and breakfast concept doesn't necessarily appeal to me either. They wanted to be in like a home setting that they could cook their own meals and those kinds of things. So, but, this, you know, talking with the people who are on, say, Pleasant Street or Gale Avenue that are doing it. The fact that we are a resort area, even though those two streets are not resort particularly. You know, everything's a short drive. You know, you can go to where it's real quick, you can go to the end of Gale Avenue and visit the lake and et cetera, et cetera. We are, the whole city really is a resort destination. Obviously, some parts of the city are more, you know, desirable or well-known or whatever than others, but the fact that you're on Pine Street somewhere, the, the whole city and the whole region is available to you to enjoy a day off or the weekend or, or whatever, you know? So it's, again, it's not just the true waterfront resort areas. It's, it's, it's throughout the entire city. And that's true of most communities, it's, you know? Okay? So the special exception for the community benefit thing is the tricky part. And it really was quite frankly designed for to satisfy the concerns, the concerns that were raised by the operators of the playhouse. Um, you know, as you found out, when you did the special exception to them, you know, the playhouse is ten to twelve weeks out of the year. And then the rest of the time, they're, they're doing short-term rentals or want to do short-term rentals. But the main thing about that little provision was to try to accommodate them as best as we could. However, there was also a discussion at the same time that there could be other potential reasons or situations that would be of true benefit to the community. And the city council in their, in their wisdom left it to you to figure out whether what the person is telling you is truly in the community interest or not. And, and so I don't envy you when we get those, you know, we haven't, I don't think we've only had, but one so far, maybe, maybe two, but. I don't envy you if we get it more and it's, it's.
I certainly would have fallen another way had a better understanding of what was being presented there. I kind of thought that was something that was wanted by the town, the city.
Well.
Yeah, it is, it isn't, you know what I mean?
I think what I, I think the rubber is going to hit the road, and I hope this happens. I kind of hope I'm not on the zoning board when it happens, but I hope it happens. And that is when the Colonial comes on line. With what they've got planned, it's a small music venue. I've lived in cities or near cities that have small music venues about that size. That have small event venues, okay? And these things tend to attract people. And, and I, I'm going to point out a case in point, a city near us, Northampton, Massachusetts, they brought the Calvin back to life, which was an old movie theater. I managed to see, I saw Arlo Guthrie there. I saw Amy Lou Harris there. This is a small venue, just like what we have envisioned. It's about the same size as our Colonial Theater. And I wonder, we're in the middle of a pandemic now, so people aren't doing any live performance things, but our goal for that is to have it to be profitable and to have it benefit the city, okay? And we've got one hotel in the center of the city. And I'm not going to impugn that hotel. It's a Ramada, it's under new, you know what I mean? It's under a new name. But what I see happening, and it's a good problem and it's a bad problem, is all of a sudden, at three or four or five years down the road, we actually have a viable, profitable, not necessarily profitable, but we have a live music venue that is bringing in small, well-named acts that people want to see. But they want to go downtown. They want to have a few drinks. They want to be able to walk to Gale Avenue. They want to be able to walk to Gal, to, to Baldwin Street to safely get to where they want to go. And they still want to come downtown Laconia and have a good time without worrying about drunk driving and all the other things that are intended on what happens when people go out to dinner, go out to eat, go to a live music venue, and then you want to go someplace and have a few cocktails afterwards.
If you're going that way, we have taxis.
And it is, but now we don't.
They tell me.
But I'm saying that I do foresee a time, on top of having a college in Northampton, that the short-term rental market has taken off exponentially there because of the number of live venues, small live venues, not the Meadowbrooks. A lot of the people, I, I sat through the planning board discussions on this, and maybe you did too, Mike, but I, I sat in the back because I wanted to hear what people had to say. And a lot of the people on Gale Avenue spoke specifically to Meadowbrook. And a lot of their short-term rentals went to people who were coming to the area specifically to see a show at Meadowbrook. They were only here for one night, maybe two. Maybe they wanted to stay for three nights and do a little tour. Do you see what I'm saying of, of New Hampshire? But they were coming up here specifically from Meadowbrook. Um, I, I, I guess that's the problem of the city council down the road, but it's going to be our problem when in three years, we have a thriving Colonial Theater. We're getting some good acts. We have acts people are willing to travel to come to see. And they want to stay someplace in Laconia. They don't want to stay out on the Boulevard. We don't have that much hotel space left in Laconia anymore. It's all been, it's all been converted to condominiums. You know, we used to have a.
A good one to drop back is, Gail, I see that if we have a viable venue where people coming in, they're visiting the area, they're doing it. We have short-term rentals available for them. There are still more than one hotel in the area. I'm, I'm thinking the Weir's isn't that far away from Laconia.
Is if you've been drinking. And that's what I'm trying to say. We want to.
And that's what they make taxis for.
Yeah.
And we better run of the taxi business.
But I mean, what's going to happen when somebody comes to us and the Colonial Theater is behind them, saying, we can't get people to come here? And I guess this isn't our problem yet because we're in the middle of a pandemic and the Colonial has been taken off. But this is a professional management company they hired. I've been at some of their venues. They do a good job. They bring real acts in. Um, we're going to have a demand for this kind of thing in the future, and it's all going to land on us because of the way the ordinance is written. And we're going to have situations where we have the management of the Colonial Theater potentially coming to us and saying, we need this. Because without this, we can't book our acts because people won't buy tickets because they don't have a place to stay. That's my concern. And then it becomes a community benefit because obviously the whole purpose of the Colonial Theater was to benefit the city of Laconia by bringing that specific kind of business to downtown and not the same, not the shorefront and not the commercial resort area, but downtown.
Yeah, no, you're right. And so the background a little bit here is, uh, we have a master plan steering committee. Uh, we've been a little dormant the past few months for obvious reasons. Uh, but we're going to be starting up again. And one of the issues that's been assigned to it is the, is the, is some revisions to the short-term rental ordinance. Um, we'll see what happens with that. You know, now that we've had, you know, a year and a half of experience with it, and we see either the good side of it or the, you know, maybe some potential areas of issue, you know, and what you're saying, Gail, is, is, is absolutely right. That could certainly become a problem. So we're going to take a look at that, and again, I can't promise where it's going to go. One of the things that I need to do, uh, is make the city council aware of the number of applications that we've had. Um, in two thousand nineteen, you had seventy-eight, seven-eight, seventy-eight. Just, just under eighty. I know it's under, sometimes it's hard to, but anyway, just under eighty applications to come to the zoning board in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, you're up to like a hundred and fifteen. And that increase is almost exclusively attributable to the special exceptions that you guys have been dealing with with short-term rentals. Uh, some of them are variance requests too because of various reasons, some of that's a dual thing, but you don't say. So, yes, you know, one of the reasons that your agenda's been so long the past few months is you've got two or three special exceptions. It seems like almost every month for short-term rental of some kind, so. And I, and I, you know, on the other hand, we also have a lot of applications that we have dealt with. It did not come with the zoning board. So there's, I mean, there's more units out there that are doing it than, than just in here.
I said, we don't, we haven't even gotten enforcement, and that's not our problem on the zoning board. That's the city's problem is how do you enforce this?
Yeah. But I want you to understand, just, just real quick, and we get back to the other discussion if you want, but I want you to understand the process that occurs either parallel to coming to the board or sometimes we don't go to the board at all. So someone comes in to do short-term logic, we explain to them that they get a permit. Two hundred and fifty dollars for two years, we start checking into the situation, they fill out the application, we start checking into the situation. Sometimes they need to come here, sometimes they don't. Uh, so we resolve all those issues and once you, if, if you say, if you grant them a special exception, or they don't need to come here all, then we're back in the same spot. And that is that we're doing inspections. If you look at page two of the, of the, take a look at these. These are the things that we specifically check for. We do not want to do a full, long building inspection like they do. Because these are private homes, they, and a lot of these things do not, a lot of the, you know, it's existing, so therefore you can't enforce these codes on existing residential plans. But we do want to make sure that there are slumkin CO detectors. We want to make sure that the windows function, that they open and close windows and doors. Uh, not, we're not checking sizes to make sure they're proper egress size or anything like that. We just want them to open. We surprise how many of our nails are painted shut. So we want to make sure that they open and close. Uh, we want to check to make sure that no sleeping areas in the basement that don't have proper life safety access. Fire extinguisher must be mounted usually in the kitchen. Can't be under the kitchen sink and the counter or in the pantry or wherever. Because in the middle of, you have a fire in your kitchen and you've been there for a whole of three hours. You don't know where the fire extinguisher is, you know? So it has to be mounted on the wall, it has to be visible. Um, and then we check the floor space that they say that they have to determine occupancy limits. We have a four hundred square feet, unless you get four. Over four hundred square feet, it's two hundred square foot per person, and that's, that's right out of the fire code, okay? So if they have an eight hundred square foot house, they get four people. The problems we were having early in this thing was they had ten or eleven people in a four, in an eight hundred square foot house. And that's obviously going to be an issue no matter what. But we do, we do check out how many square feet they have, and then that determines what the occupancy limit is. We check the driveway size. If they say, I've got room for three cars, we go out through the measurement. Make sure that there's room for three cars. They got to have a nine by nineteen, a nine foot by nineteen foot space for each car off the street. We don't allow any on-street parking because more than half of the year in Laconia, you cannot park on the street anyway. There's no overnight parking in winter. So you, if you say you've got three parks, you check it out, okay? Um, once they go through the inspections and if they have to come here, you're all resolved, then we issue the permit, we make sure that they understand what all the other rules are, particularly trash removal, parking restrictions, blockages, noise constraints, et cetera, et cetera. We notify the butters that the permit's been issued, so they are not part of that. Uh, notification to the butters is also a review of how they make complaints. Um, so the Ramada situation last, a year and a half ago, we were in a situation where people were calling us in October to complain about noise on Fourth of July weekend. It's like, what do you want us to do about it? And. And there was noise and all those kinds of things and. And we called the police, oh, we don't want to bother them and it's like, well, unfortunately, the police already enforced the mechanism for noise, that's the way it is, you know? So the idea is if something is happening, you have to make a complaint while it's happening. If it's a noise issue, you gotta call the police while the noise is happening. And the police come down and you either tell them to quiet down or they say there's no issue with noise or whatever the result is, but. The main point is there's a record on the call log at the police station that someone called to complain about noise. And this is what they do about it, so that's something that we can check on and say, we're, we're a good noise complaint, so those, those kinds of things. Same thing with trash. They gotta call DPW if someone, you know, if trash day is Thursday and they're putting the trash out Sunday night and the tenants leave, they're sitting there for four days. This time of year, maybe not so much a problem, but in July, that's a real problem, you know? So. It's those kinds of things that we want. Not only the owner of the property to understand the rules, but also for the others to recognize. If there's an issue, yes, we want to know about it, but we want, it needs to be timely so that. You know, particularly noise and trash that is taken care of immediately and not something that. Well, this happened three weeks ago, it's like, well, you know, what do you want us to do about it? Okay? So that's where we're at. I don't know if there's any other discussion about any of the other aspects of. I hope that helps.
I, I, I don't, um, I guess the only other thing I, I wanted to ask, this has nothing to do with short term rentals. But when you.
Five year rule, how did they come up with that? You know, I mean. It doesn't seem fair, somebody's been doing it for three years, okay, you can't do it anymore. I've been doing it for six years, it's okay.
Yeah. Uh, was it? That wasn't the number that I came up with.
From what I understand, Mike, from the former mayor, who. One of the reasons why all these things, he told me this was built into it and this was all done on the record, so it, I'm not. Talking out of school here, is they wanted to get a unanimous consensus on the board. They didn't, they didn't want this to be a split decision, it was sort of like a Supreme Court where they really do try to get some consensus on this, like we do here. You know, we try to, you know, do things, so we try to look unanimous to people or as much as we can. And that was why they had to carve out some of those exceptions because they weren't gonna get. A unanimous city council to support it. They, they, it, they had to make some exceptions for these. And these were really very arbitrary. To be, to be very honest with you, there was no. Reason for it, other than it, it was a number. Sort of like the seven hundred and fifty square foot ADU unit, they could have picked six hundred, they could have picked eight fifty, they picked seven fifty. Do, do you see what I'm saying? There, there was no reason. Had to pick a number and that's the number they came up with. Um, to get a consensus. I think, um. Does anyone have some questions for Dean about the, about, you know, this, I, I, I think when the rubber, like I said, I think the rubber's gonna hit the road. When the, when the pandemic ends and the Colonial Theater comes online. And then we're gonna see what happens. And then the city council's gonna, the zoning board is overwhelmed and we're gonna have to go back to the drawing table and. Come up with a short term rental commission or something like that and take it out of the zoning board and just. You know. Do something else or make it purely administrative.
Anyways, until then, I would move with what we have here. It's nice to worry about too many people spending too much money in Laconia.
I don't want to worry about that, that's the problem, we don't want to, we don't want to discourage people from coming here and spending their money. But we also have to protect housing stock for the people who do live here. Um, and the way this law is written, I guess it's fallen on us. So that's just part of what we have to accept as, as, as being members of the zoning board, it's, this is the way they designed it. The steering committee and maybe the city council will have to revisit that down the road. Once things change, I mean, we're, we're not even seeing the tip of this, Mike, because people aren't traveling right now. Um, two years, we could be, we could have seven, eight applicants a month. Just for Airbnb and that's not counting all the other stuff we have, which is adding value.
I would say, I would say that you'd like to think that people aren't traveling, but. Since we finally got the bridge done in the Weers, I'll say I've seen an inordinate amount of people from other places. When I go out and I look at what's in the. Uh, parking lot of the, uh, grocery store or anything around. There's a lot of people from somewhere else. And those is, that's what we're here to attract.
Right, and on, on a, on a completely different topic, and I'm gonna ask this question of the, of the, of the zoning staff. Um. When people submit applications to the planning board. The, the planning board votes on whether that application is complete or not. Why do we not do that with the zoning board? Is there, is there any reason that, that we, we don't always get. Complete applications or applications that are so irrelevant to land use? I mean, we opt by law here those, even if they have absolutely nothing to do with land.
The, uh, acceptance part, I believe, is defined by state law or planning board, not, not defined by zoning boards.
Okay. Close to something Roland has talked about a lot, but we.
I understand and the, the, the issue of the incomplete or confusing and I, I get it. Uh, applications. Um, we're, we're working it. Um. It's, you know, you gotta keep in mind that the applicants are filling out these forms and submitting them to us. And, you know, we do review them and we do tell them, oh, I don't know that you've got this covered, you need more information here. You, you would. You'd be surprised to see some of the applications that you don't see because we've already, you know, flushed out more, but. So the point about. The detail and, and, and. That, that point is well taken and we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying.
Oh, no, that's, that's, are, I just didn't know if there was a way that we could look at an application. And that you, with, which we give you the leverage to look at someone and say, look, they're not gonna hear this. They're just gonna look at, because you can do that with the planning board.
Yeah.
You know?
I, I can't, but the planning board can, yes, yes.
Hey, they're not gonna hear this.
I, I, uh. I don't believe so, but I will double check.
I would rather not have to review everything and then see it again, these things can go on for some time and I have full confidence. In our staff here. I say that what was confusing for me tonight was the applicant who had filled it out. And. Crossed between the application for a special exception and the variance.
Oh, yeah, well, that, yeah, that was just a mistake, I, I'm not worried about.
But those are, those are some of the details and.
Well, let me ask, this is a sixty four thousand dollar question, Dean, is it a staffing? Is it, do you have a staffing shortage?
No, we do not.
You're not.
Not yet, anyway.
All right, well, I was saying, I was just coming, I mean, you know.
Sometimes, sometimes we need to. Reallocate. Uh, who's doing what a little bit, we might be able to do that better, but. No, I, I think we have adequate staff.
Okay, all right, I mean, I, I don't mean individuals as far as who the staff is, I mean, do you need. Additional staff, do you think, in your department to get all this done? At this time and your answer is no, so that's, that's it? Um, do we have anything else that wants to come in front of the board tonight or? Anyone else might have anything to say while we're airing our grievances? It's almost festive, so you know, you get something to say.
It was actually almost, in, in fact, a solstice, so if we're done with everything here, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye. Thank you very much.